Good afternoon, welcome. This is the Marion City Council work session for Tuesday, November fifteenth. First, on our agenda this evening, this afternoon, we have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. It's always a good thing for us to support and recognize our small businesses. They are the backbone of Marion's economy. And we especially want to recognize our small businesses and encourage support for them on Small Business Saturday. So I have a proclamation. I'll come down front and I think Brooke Proudy, our main street director is here to accept it.
Oh, jealous taking pictures. Okay. Okay, whereas the city of Marion, Iowa celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently thirty-three point two million small businesses in the United States, which represent ninety-nine point nine percent of all businesses with employees in the United States. And in twenty-twenty-one, US consumers reported spending a record high total of an estimated twenty-three point three billion dollars in independent at independent retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday. And whereas ninety-three percent of shoppers said that supporting small business is more important than ever because of the pandemic. And whereas seventy-eight percent of independent retailers said holiday sales are critical and will enable them to stay in business. And whereas Marion, Iowa supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abouassaly, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim November twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two as Small Business Saturday in the city of Marion and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. There we go. Now do it again.
Come on out to Small Business Saturday. We'll be having from ten to two, we'll be giving out bags that say don't buy from strangers, shop local, Marion, Iowa. So we're excited about that promotion and all the stores will be open that day. So shop local. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Okay, proceeding with our agenda, the first item that's marked for discussion by the staff is item A-ten. Are there any items prior to A-ten? For discussion? Any questions on any item prior to A-ten on the consent agenda? Okay, we have our finance director already prepared to talk about A-ten and eleven.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'll actually start by commenting that items A-eight and A-nine are two other annual reports. We have traditionally given a presentation on those in the past, but you recall, we did give a preliminary annual report out back in August and have continued to share a lot of that information as we've continued with the budget series of discussions that we've continued to have. So tonight, we're going to talk, I'm going to talk about A-ten and also A-eleven. These are on the Certificate of Tax Increment Financing and the Annual Urban Renewal Report. And as we talk about these topics, we first like to have a refresher on what we're talking about. So we'll start with an example. We'll cover the different obligation instruments and then go over those reports. So what is tax increment financing? I always like to think of the basic example as a piece of land. A piece of land always carries a value. And it's taxed at that value. But then when we build a building, we increase that value and the amount of tax created, the difference in tax created is what we call tax increment. So let's give an example. In November two thousand seventeen, the city entered a development agreement with legacy manufacturing. Legacy manufacturing constructed a new warehousing and distribution facility. The city's agreement was a five-year seventy-five percent TIF incentive with a maximum of seven hundred and forty thousand. The value of that property before the project occurred was nine point four million. The value as of January one, twenty-twenty-two, as you can see on the screen, is over twenty million. Over on the bottom left, you can see the property taxes paid before the TIF started or the tax increment rebate started. They were paying approximately three hundred and thirty-five thousand in tax. Starting there in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, the amount in blue was five hundred and twenty-four thousand, with the rebate being just over two hundred and fifty thousand. So you can see that with tax increment financing working the way we always intend, the amount of tax paid year over year still increases. But the developer gets a rebate for a few years to help pay for the project. And over time, after that fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, that whole box will become blue and the different taxing jurisdictions will receive that additional revenue. Again, looking at the top right now on the debt service side, the debt service levy is exempt from tax increment finance, which essentially means we see that jump right away. So in nineteen-twenty, they paid just under twenty thousand in the debt service levy. It jumped up to over forty thousand in twenty-twenty-one and is kind of held around there. So that's kind of an example to give you what we're actually talking about. So how do we utilize tax increment finance? There are three ways. A rebate agreement is essentially a development agreement with the developer. An internal loan, which is when we borrow from one fund and then repay that fund with tax increment finance or entering into a loan agreement for either a bond or a note. These are typically like urban renewal bonds. When we use these instruments, we are then required to report on these four different items. Gatsby seventy-seven, the urban renewal report, the TIP indebtedness certification and continuing disclosures. So what are these things? Gatsby seventy-seven is to represent to each each taxing jurisdiction is required to file their annual report that includes financial note disclosures. So they're required to file a note disclosure and that's what this information provides them. It's called on here diverted TIF revenue because that's the terminology they use. But what it actually is, is the actual expenditure to develop developers specifically. So we're talking development agreements on these. The amount of money that they would have received if the TIF had not occurred. Now bear in mind, we always look at it as a but for in the city of Marion when we're giving out tax increment finance. So we always like to make the argument that those dollars wouldn't even exist had we not done those arrangements. You can see in the chart that out of each dollar, the city of Marion contributed approximately forty cents of each dollar utilized, meaning those dollars were diverted from our general fund levy, our employee benefits levy and therefore. So the annual urban renewal reports required by the state on a high level, it is by urban renewal area. And I have the breakout here by urban renewal area from a percentage standpoint. You can see that Collins Road continues to be our strongest urban renewal area, followed by Central Corridor, and then we've got a few that are just small that are hanging out there. What makes up these numbers? Rebate agreements, internal loans, bonds and notes. And the low to moderate is utilized when there's a residential urban renewal area TIF or then required to set some dollars aside for low to moderate income. Just a few notes on this screen. The largest rebate agreements were Genesis Equities for the Sixth Avenue Development Project, Legacy Manufacturing, Easttown Crossing and Timberline. On the internal loan side, we did see a payoff of an internal loan this last year, which is why you see a drop. And then on the low to moderate, the fifty thousand was towards the mobile library. So looking at those actual expenditures on annual amounts, you can see on the screen rebates that are greater than thirty-five thousand. The navy blue is the Collins Road Urban Renewal Area, the light blue is the Central Corridor Urban Renewal Area, and the green is West Tower Terrace. And you can read those, so I'm not going to read them. Now we're going to fast forward. So we're going to skip the year we're currently in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three and jump to the following year because the TIP indebtedness certification is certifying to the county which dollars we're going to use for the following year. Again, breaking it out by urban renewal area, you've got Collins Road there still taking the lion's share over seventy-five thousand, seventy-five percent. And then you've got Central Corridor and West Tower Terrace. And then you'll notice that Winslow Road and Highway thirteen North, number one, are no longer there. But we have Echo Hill Road. We have created a new urban renewal area, which we're going to be utilizing or are utilizing for the roundabout out on Echo Hill. And the other two are just expired. So once we've spent the what's left in the low to moderate income dollars in Winslow Road, that one will be complete. And then again, what makes up the detail of those? Just a couple notes. The decrease in rebate agreements is largely because of legacy manufacturing falling off the example I provided earlier. There are a couple other rebates that will start, but that's what explains most of that. Internal loans, you see a huge jump. This is due to the airport improvement program, updating the administrative and professional urban renewal program and the broad and main grant incentive that we provided. There's an internal loan also for that. And then on the bonds and notes, as I just mentioned, we are utilizing TIF to pay for the Echo Hill Urban Renewal Area for the roundabout. And then over time, our bonds are usually structured so that they increase over time. So providing the detail of what makes up those incentives. Again, the dark blue is Collins Road Urban Renewal Area, the light blue is the Central Corridor Urban Renewal Area, and these are rebates that are greater than thirty-five thousand. And then looking at what's expiring, I will say that we are working with DA Davidson on a model that includes a cash flow and an exhibit that you can actually see all of them and when they fall off. But until then, here are the debts expiring. Colors are still the same as before. And here are some of the debts that will be starting or have started. I showed a few years because you can kind of see. Any questions?
Questions?
No questions. No, go ahead.
No question, just a comment. Thank you and your department for being able to keep track of this. So again, I've got a long accounting career, but this is a whole different arena that I've not been involved in. So yeah, you know, it's a it's a major area for the city to use TIF. And obviously you've got all the requirements to track it and report. So thank you for doing all that.
Other questions? Go ahead.
Took a little soak time to get to a question here. The the major urban renewal district is Collins Road. How long? How long is that in force? Does that have a natural expiration date?
Collins Road actually does not have an expiration date. It was created long before the new rules that were created in two thousand twelve.
If you have more questions, I'm sure Kim could probably speak on that side better than I can, but.
All right. So as so as things that are allocated against that, and I'm not going to say this probably in the right accounting terms, as those things expire, that just frees up additional financial resources that can be subsequently applied.
Yes. So the thing to bear in mind with TIF is you're looking at it. There's the overall urban renewal area, but then there are what are called TIF districts within each urban renewal area. And so the base is actually set when that TIF district is created and we certify debt. That base is frozen and it stays there. The thing is, it's about how much we're requesting. That's what that whole county TIF indebtedness report is about. So that increments created. We may only use a quarter of it. We may use a half of it. We may not use any of it. So any any year we don't use it, those dollars go to the jurisdictions and the jurisdictions get to use the tax. Are you following me?
Yep.
Including general fund, yep. So I'm saying that that increment is always there to utilize. We may not use it.
Right. Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Great. Good explanation. And keep getting closer to where we want to be where we can actually see them all. And we can see what's falling off and what's coming on and all of them.
I have a draft in front of me.
Yeah.
It has a cash flow and then it gets into the exhibits with a detail by development. So.
I think that'll be very helpful. Yes.
If I can just add that we we've just concluded at about three fifty, a meeting with Michael Mulaney at DA Davidson. And one of the things that we talked about was, you know, council has been very patient as we've been building these financial models. And we we want to make sure that we get to a point where we're actually showing you what a final product is going to look like for all our different funds. So I appreciate Leanne bringing it up and showing you briefly here, but we're working towards it. We're getting there and we're excited to show you once it's all completely built.
Thank you. Appreciate all your work on it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item that's marked for discussion is on page four, which is E-nine. Are there any items to discuss prior to E-four and E-nine on page four? Any questions on any specific items? Okay, then we'll move to E-nine on page four. Mr. Barlow.
Yeah, Sharon. So we're going to talk about this item and the next item together. They're they're separate items, but basically they're both petitions that we've received. A copy of the petition is in your council packet. And the first one is an intersection where they're actually requesting traffic signals to go in. So again, this gets received and filed. It gets referred to TAC. TAC does a study, comes back to city council, presents said study when time allows, and then gives a recommendation to city council on how to proceed, whether that's do nothing or install signals or whatever it happens to be on that report. Unless for some reason, the city council says, no, we don't want you to spend time on that, but this is just the process. This is one of the steps in said process. So the first one is the request for signals at Casino and thirteen. And the other one is an overhead light for visibility and speed limit signs. So those are the two requests that are on the agenda.
Okay.
So unless there's some pushback, we'll proceed with referring him to TAC.
Go ahead. Yeah, Mike, does TAC consider the population that is immediately adjacent to an area like this or an intersection like this in terms of the principal demographics of the user, the potential users of that intersection?
Well, I assume you're talking about the casino intersection.
Right, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we look at zoning, we'll actually do physical counts out there of what the vehicles are. For any traffic signal device, we actually have to meet the warrants. This is joint jurisdiction, so DOT is not going to allow us to put that signal in there unless it actually meets warrants. They do not like it. For example, there's several down there by Menards, especially the one east of Menards that was put in based on speculation that that area was going to develop. As we all know, that has not happened. And so there's a light there that likely doesn't need to be there that's actuated. And so they don't, they don't like that. So they don't want to say, oh, this is all going to develop. We're going to need these lights. They want to see the numbers hard and fast now that it's needed.
So the request goes to the DOT?
No, though. So eventually, yes, if that's the recommendation. But first, it's going to go to TAC. TAC will do a study. That study will come back to city council. City council will get that recommendation. That recommendation may say, yes, we recommend putting in the signals, or it may say, no, I don't know yet until the numbers. I can say it's likely going to say no based on past performance. But even if, say, city council wants to put that signal in, we have to come up with a quarter million dollars and then or at least a half million to three quarters of a million dollars. And then we have to apply to the DOT for an application, put it in on their primary system, and they might say no.
Okay.
But that's ten steps down the road. This is step one.
I know in the past when I've met with the residents there, they've asked about a street light, like a light, not a not a stoplight, but just just light at the intersection. So but that would be, that wouldn't be DOT, right? That would be.
So if we put the light, if that was an actual petition, if we kept it out of the DOT right away, then we could do it. But anytime it's in joint jurisdiction, we both have to sign off on it.
Yeah. Any other questions for Mike on this? Any objection to the, right? That's what you're looking for, if there's any objections to those requests.
And as you'll recall, we used to have it where one person would request this. That's why we do the petition now, so that it's a group that wants it, not just one.
I like that better. Okay. Think you're good. The next item that's marked by staff for discussion is B-one at the bottom of page five. Are there any questions on items prior to that? Okay, B-one under the regular agenda, we have Brian Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor and Council. So there will be a correction for Thursday on the agenda. We did have a mix up with a vendor we caught last week. And so the actual amount for the resolution, we'll read what's on this slide, two million, seven hundred thousand fifty-five, one seventy. And so we caught that year last week, so I want the council to be aware of that. So with this resolution, this is the first phase of our fleet replacement for public services. This is something that our staff has been waiting for for some time. And so with this phase, we have the replacement of twenty-four truck chassis. All right, these are the bare chassis and then eventually we'll get these outfitted with plow and dump bodies or utility bodies. And so the second phase is going to be our specialized equipment. That will come later. That's our specialized equipment, our street sweepers, line strippers, sewer jets, et cetera. And so with this first phase, we had a chassis replacement budget of three point six million dollars. We went out to bid. We solicited all the truck manufacturers that we knew about. There's five in this this area. We had one responsive bidder that was Truck Country, which is a freight liner dealer. They responded with a bid of just over two point seven million dollars. And so we were very happy with that bid outcome. And so with that, they were able to guarantee us build slots. So right now in the truck world, you essentially cannot get trucks. And so they were able to promise us build slots of eleven chassis, starting in twenty-twenty-three, then twenty-twenty-four, that would be an additional thirteen chassis. So with this specification, we are, we are getting set up to run both conventional diesel fuel by as well as renewable diesel. So we'll have some choices to make. We'll have those flexible fuel options as we move down the road. So upon approval of this resolution, we would come back probably, probably in late January, and we'd come back with a body and plow bids at that time. So after this, after the bare chassis bids, we'll come back with the bids for for up putting these trucks. So we did provide you a kind of a chassis program schedule, what that looks like. And so if there's any questions, I'd be I'd be happy to.
Hey, thanks, Ryan. Questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, can you go back to the previous slide? So the last comment there, because I looked at this and there's only three on the this sheet for solid waste, so I knew you had to have more. So you've got nine build slots reserved for.
And so part of this bid process is that they had to reserve us build slots.
Right.
And so in the industry today, it's all about build slots. And so with this, with the bids going out, they had to reserve us those build slots for when the city decides what they want to do for solid waste collections.
Okay.
So that data is going to come back in December. We're going to have, start having those discussions. But we wanted to make sure we had those build slots reserved for the city, no matter what we decided to do.
Depending upon the survey, the information and the direction for that.
That is exactly.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly then.
Yep.
What's renewable diesel?
Okay, so we talked about this a little bit ago. Renewable diesel is basically taking the best example is in Uptown Marion. All the used grease that goes into recycled grease bins gets picked up by a company called Midwest Biofuels. They take it and make it into diesel fuel. And then it's sold back. It's taken to a Newton by refinery, then it's sold back. And so we would, with this technology, we would have that option to run off, run off of recycled products. Not only that, but also B-one hundred, which is soybeans. And so going back to the discussion we had about fuel, with this option, this allow the city council to choose how they want to run the fleet. And so it could be all renewable energy. It could be off of soybeans that the council wanted to, or it could be off of conventional diesel. So this is by far what we think is the best best choice for the city.
Bye, Grant.
Yes. So our approval of B-one will result in the chassis delivery sequence that you have here in twenty-three, eleven and in twenty-four, thirteen. The question is, when will those be completely outfitted and on the road?
Great question. So if you look at that sheet that we provided you, the build dates correspond. And so roughly, you'll look at that build date when we get those. And so the best example, let's take the two twenty-twenty-three chassis delivered. The turnaround on those chassis is roughly ninety days. So once we receive those chassis, they'll go to the outfitter and then they have ninety days after that to get them back to us. And so when Freightliner came back to us and says, hey, we got eleven spots for you, we were excited. We were like, yes, thank you. And so what that means as we take those chassis and they get them delivered to us, essentially what that means by next winter, we'll have a pretty substantial fleet that will support our current fleet.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Will.
The bids to be solicited from Island Dump Bodies is estimated two point two. Yep. What was the budget for that?
Two point two million.
So that is the budget. Okay.
That is the budget. So if you want to go over that spreadsheet I gave you, I'd be happy to. That's what we use. And so essentially with the chassis, so each chassis is coming in at like a hundred and ten thousand or a hundred and nineteen thousand. We budget an additional either one hundred thousand or fifty thousand, depending on what it is. An additional one hundred thousand buys you basically a plow truck. That's a dump body with a sander on it plus a plow. All right. Utility truck, those are the utility boxes you see on the side. Those typically fit the thousand dollars. And so if when or if city council approves us, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and release those bids, bring those back probably the last meeting in January and then bring them forward to council for consideration.
That, I'm sorry, is it Truck Country?
Correct.
That, do they do that also?
They're the Freightliner, Dito. No, they do not do that.
Okay, so that's totally separate.
Yeah, so with with the plow trucks in this area, we have three vendors that deal with Henderson, which is a very large international dealer. And we have Tri-State, which is also a big dealer, and then also Future Align. They all know that this is coming and so they're they're prepared for it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead. One more question. So obviously you made the comment already that you're very happy with the bid from Truck Country. One more question, uh, so obviously you made the comment already that you're very happy with the bid from Truck Country. Why do you think there was only a single bid?
They don't have those slots.
Oh, the other companies do not have built slots?
They do not, and so, uh, we sat down with every single manufacturer, international, Peterbilt, uh, Auto Car, every single one of them. The, the, the truck industry, the manufacturing world is so far behind. And, uh, when we sat down to them, they said, yeah, we can deliver those, BB twenty twenty-five. We said, that's not flying, so.
Okay, so part of your RFQ was based upon delivery?
Delivery.
Okay, so then, and, and Truck Country was the only one being able to deliver any chassis in twenty-three and twenty-four.
We actually kept it open for twenty-four.
Okay.
So every single vendor that we met with said, um, we can't give you chassis till twenty twenty-five.
So everything was all further out yet, beyond twenty-four?
Yep.
All right, yeah, we need to get new vehicles cuz those other ones are limping along.
Yep, and I think, uh, uh, Grant, you brought up the, the need for, um, doing leases and things like that to get our fleet supported. In the meantime, we've gone ahead and done that, we've implemented a couple, but we got three vendors that are gonna support us if we need them. Mid-Iowa Solid Waste, Kilburg Equipment for Solid Waste Vehicles, and also, um, um, Truck Country also said if we need, if we have a need there, we'll, we'll, we'll support you. So those are in place if we need them, but I think we'll be okay.
Okay, that's, that's good to know too, and thanks for remembering that idea.
So when we, when we got the, the build slots back to us, we were extremely relieved.
Anyone else?
Go ahead, so out of curiosity, cuz you brought it up, the, the grease, like in the uptown, you said, cuz that's something they purchase from the city.
They do, and so we have, if you go up there, there's, there's the Blue Benz, all right? We get a rebate back on those, just for having those, but it's not a lot, it's like twenty, thirty dollars a load. So they'll take that to Newton, they'll process that to renewable. So most of the renewable diesel that's made in Iowa, and Iowa's one of the leaders in it, goes out to California, cuz you cannot burn regular diesel in California. All right, but what has happened, we have that technology now that it's getting outfitted around the state, that allows us to utilize this. And so one of the reasons why we couldn't utilize renewable diesel, it would gel up in the winter. All right, so with this technology, the DOT is jumping on it, just found out Cedar Rapids is gonna start utilizing it, this is a big deal. And so if we can, if we even turn to using B one hundred, which is one hundred percent soybean oil, that saves us a buck a gallon in diesel. Not only that, but it's, it's clean and it's, you know, powered by Iowa, so that, it's a big deal. So, and we'll come back with that information later, uh, with the council, so.
Yeah, just one last follow-up, Ryan, and it's about the build date. So for example, if the build date is stated as, uh, Q two, twenty twenty-three, does that then mean that particular unit would be then delivered sometime in the timeframe of Q three, twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, thirty days. So once that build date kicks in, it's thirty days to get that truck.
Oh, thirty days?
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty quick turnaround.
Okay, I, okay, I thought I heard you say ninety days.
So thirty days for the chassis.
Okay.
Once we get the chassis, it goes to the outfitter, the outfitter builds the boxes, puts the plows on, that's ninety days.
Okay.
So it's a pretty quick turnaround right now, the reason why that is, they can't get trucks.
Okay, thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next is E two on page six. Mike?
So on Thursday, we'll have a public comment period for the public to come in and talk about this area. But as you recall, we had the fire truck incident where north of Twainth Avenue could not make it down the street. And so that area of Twainth Avenue up to Thirty-third and Tenth Albernate, we made that area. So it was only no parking on one side of the street to alleviate that issue. Um, and then after we got done with doing that area, city council then gave us direction, that let's look at this through the whole city. So it, it kinda goes with also with the new fire model of responding with fire engines to medical calls and making sure that we can provide that level of service that we need to. So this was the area that we picked first, um, so this is the West Eighth area that's kinda secluded in there. Um, in your council packet, you can't see the, the words that are written on this, but if you zoom into the PDF that you have, each street, whether it's an east-west street, and so we said on the north side, there's this much parking, on the south side, there's this much parking. We took out driveways, fire hydrants, mailboxes, anything that we've blocked, and figured out what side of the street has the most parking, and then put the no parking on the side that would alleviate and provide for the most parking available. Um, in some cases, it was pretty much the same, so generally, for a parallel parking spot, it's twenty foot wide. So if they're within twenty feet, then it becomes, okay, do we put it on the side with the fire hydrants? Or are the streets offset, or makes more, more sense to put it on the north side versus the south side? So then engineering judgment comes into play, some were very obvious where it was, okay, there's ninety feet on here, so we can fit three more cars on this one than, than another side. So what we did do to save a little bit of time is we put all of these items, similar to what we do with a project calendar of a project, and put all the resolutions together in that, as long, as well as, um, a motion to receive and file the TAC report. And that TAC report talks about the safety ex, the aspects of it, of why we're doing it, how we came up with the numbers to, that way we're leaving the most amount of parking still on the streets as possible.
With something like this, is there a notice to the residents?
Yep, and that's also included in the council packet. So every one of these residents, it's, it was either four or six hundred residents, got a letter from us. Um, so I think I have maybe five emails so far, I'm not sure how my Rachel has. And we'll present those during the public hearing, for those that are not able to be here, we'll read those, um, provide those to you. And then whatever public decides to show up at that as well.
Okay, questions for Mike? Pretty straightforward, thank you. Okay, there's, uh, one item under community development on page, uh, page seven, which is a second, uh, second reading of an ordinance. Any questions on that? All right, we'll move on to discussions, the first one is the discussion regarding transit service. We have Kesha here.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. As you can see from the first slide, I'm touching base again, um, about the current service in Marion. Talking about transit, right, current service with fixed route, we have about five to five hundred and fifty riders per month, it's a one-hour circular of Marion. So every hour, there's a transfer at Twix Town Road for anybody on transit in Marion to go to, um, either make the transfer to Hiawatha or First Avenue Route that takes you downtown Cedar Rapids. Um, so there is limitations on service, as we've talked about before, and that's when council directed staff to, to look into what are our options uh, with transit services in Marion. So currently we pay, uh, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to Cedar Rapids Transit, and then an additional thirty-nine thousand to NTS or Horizons for after-hours service when fixed route is not running. Um, and then, so CR came to Marion, or we worked with Cedar Rapids to, to get a twenty-eight-year agreement for FY twenty-four. And so to continue the service that we have would be four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So that is a one-hour fixed route service. Actually, that might be, that is, I didn't take that number down, it'd be four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, my apologies for this, I've played a lot of numbers, um, with this, uh, so, so with that, we are looking at recommendations. How do we look at transit in Marion, how do we, uh, make it fit our needs, right? So we've, we've heard from residents, we've heard from businesses, how do I get transit here, right? So option A is staff's recommendation, it extends Route Five, so the First Avenue Route, it extends Route Five to Uptown Marion. It would be a fifteen-minute frequency, so currently, First Avenue, there's a bus at the stop every fifteen minutes. And so, um, and Brad Brower is here, he can attest that, that when they implemented the increased service, you saw increased ridership. You know, cuz you, you can depend on that consistency, right? Um, and then this would add, what we've talked about previously is micro-transit. So that is where Horizons comes in and would also work, uh, door-to-door service for anybody using an app, it could be as soon as fifteen minutes, if you use the app, they can pick you up. If not, if you're calling in, it could be, um, likely an hour, but that's leaps and bounds ahead of any other, um, on-demand service, that's a, that's a day's notice or, uh, the hour circular that we currently have. And that would be door-to-door service within Marion. Or it can get you to the transit stop, or it gets you basically within Marion. And so if you had to go to downtown, you'd still need fixed route, um, to, to get you there. Um, and so this, this option of the, the green line on the screen is what would be fixed route. So it goes ground transportation center, downtown Cedar Rapids, comes up First Avenue, um, makes a loop of Sixth and Seventh Avenue, and then returns at a fifteen-minute frequency. And so with this, there is no, if you get on the bus in Uptown Marion, there is no transfer at Twix Town. You don't need to get out of your comfy seat on the bus to get onto another bus to go downtown. So that's the, that's the benefit of having that seamless, um, connection with the extension of Route Five. Option B would continue service as it is. Um, and so we would have the addition of micro-transit. So as we've, as we've come to understand, right, there's limitations in our current one-hour circular. So micro-transit would, um, be brought in to aid in those additional connections with still having that one-hour circular of, of the Marion community. It's not an ideal pairing, because what you have is you have a fifteen-minute response time for micro-transit and then an hour for the circular. And so I think it's, it's staff's assumption as, as riders see the benefit of micro-transit, you potentially see the decrease in fixed route transit, right? Um, and so this one still would require that Twix Town transfer stop. So if you get on a bus stop in Marion, if you want to go outside of Marion, you are required to get off the bus onto another bus to go onto your final destination. Option C is to extend Route Five to Walmart. And so this one, you'll see in a moment, does have a, a larger cost to it for operating because the extension of service is a fifteen-minute circulator clear out to Walmart. And so it will be Walmart to Ground Transportation Center downtown. Um, the benefit of this, it would be, again, fifteen-minute frequency for the fixed route service, so the large buses. Uh, we would pair it with micro-transit, but it would be a lesser number of micro-transit buses because you'd have, um, a fixed route bus going right through town at a fifteen-minute frequency. And so the assumption of needing to get to the edges of town would be less. Um, and again, with this, the extension of Route Five to downtown, you don't have that, um, need to transfer at Twix Town. So you can hop on the bus any fifteen minutes, go east-west through Marion, um, get you where you're going, or use micro-transit to get you either to your destination or to the transit stop to go further downtown. Okay, so those are the three options that we're looking at, right? So just refresh, right, option A is just getting, um, the fifteen-minute fixed route service to Uptown Marion, and then back to downtown with micro-transit. Option B is the, is the, sticking with what we have, right, it's, it's comfortable for some of the riders, right? And then we'd add in micro-transit. Um, and then option C is, is beefing up the system clear through town. So we would have that fifteen-minute, fifteen-minute touch base clear through east-west through town. Um, and then all of these pair with micro-transit. And so when we're looking at cost, the cost of just fixed route, um, option A is to extend Route Five, continue Route Twenty, or extend, um, Route Five to Walmart. So you can see, uh, extending Route Five, this is just for fixed route buses, um, is four oh two, and then it four thirty-one, and then seven seventy-nine, so when you pair that with the micro-transit, there's a number of buses in here, when you pair that with the micro-transit, you're looking at nine hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five versus nine hundred and ninety thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven or sixty-eight, and then one point two, um, again, that's additional buses on the line making that, so that's, that's your higher cost there. And so here's the needed levy rate for all of those, our current levy rate, uh, this doesn't, talk about that, it's in the next slide. Our current levy rate is twenty-eight cents. And so this is, uh, this is the increase to the levy rate, and so this is the increase from the existing. So this is what, what the levy rate would need to gain in order to cover the operating costs. So again, with recommendation number one, the, the cost of fixed route plus micro-transit, we'd be looking at or proposing nine hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. So that is the cost of, um, Cedar Rapids Transit, Fixed Route Service, and the micro-transit with Horizons. That would all be under one agreement, uh, going forward. And then, so, um, this is one of the things that Leon brought up, that, well, council may be interested on what the impact would be to, um, to the tax, you know, what does, what does that levy rate translate to in an annual tax impact? So the additional tax on a, on a house assessed at two hundred thousand dollars would be twenty-six dollars per year. And then for a micro-bus, uh, replacement, it was in the, it's at the bottom of the pre- previous slide, I failed to mention that. It's an assumption of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year, that capital cost is just replacing one of those buses every year. Um, and so for residential house valued at four hundred thousand dollars, you'd be looking at an increase of fifty-one dollars per year, eighteen dollars for that capital replacement, um, eighty-five for multifamily residential, um, and thirty-seven dollars for that replacement. And then for commercial of a million dollars, it'd be a hundred, an additional hundred and sixty-eight dollars with a capital replacement of a hundred and two. Are there any, um, took away my, my question slide, um, so are there any questions of staff?
Hey, good job.
I, I threw a lot of words and numbers at you, my apologies.
Yeah, you did a good job with it.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just add on, um, really quick? We did run these recommendations through the council subcommittee, um, which helped us narrow it down from the five options to the three. So, um, we're presenting it to council here to get direction, it's not finalizing anything yet. Um, wanna have that discussion and direction, that helps give us some clarity as we're working with our partners at Cedar Rapids Transit and Horizons. Um, and then it also helps us as we continue to build the budget, um, throughout the next several months. So there's still a lot of work that has to be done, but we're, we're, we're trying to get the council's feedback on, um, the level of interest, um, based on the direction that was provided, uh, probably about a year ago, a little bit more, um, to staff on next boring, expanding that service.
Yeah, and Brad DeBauer with Cedar Rapids Transit is here, and House of Bedbell is also here with Horizons. So they are experts in their field, I'm not going to pretend to know nearly as much as they do about the intricacies of how, how these would pair as well. I just, so if you have any questions for them as well.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna add one thing, on the numbers, we did assume a three percent, um, growth in taxable valuation. Obviously, we don't actually receive that number until around January first. So, um, those levy estimates and these dollars before you are making that assumption. And it's city portion only.
Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, first off, um, Kesha, thanks to all involved, all of our community stakeholders, um, i- in getting this pulled together, um, because there's some very creative thinking that's gone into this. Um, one principal question, uh, and I think it is in option C. It, that's recommendation number three, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, if we could ju- just go back to the options C map, we, do we know how, how much of that ridership that is using the existing system? How much of that is going to the Walmart area or originating from the Walmart area? Do we have any intuition about that?
I, I don't know, Brad, if you wanna talk about it, it's a, it's a, I think I've alluded before that you've, you've got a significant, um, ridership counts on the west side of Marion, and then as it comes down, um, Eleventh Street, Fifteenth Street, you've got a significant amount of ridership um, in South Marion. in South Marion, and then in East Marion, and then in up North Tenth Street. So would you say it's about a quarter?
It's a major destination, right? I mean, you have the Zoor Apartments on the north end.
Brad, would you mind coming to the microphone? Because the meeting's recorded, so thank you. Welcome.
Again, Brad DeBrower, Transit Manager with Cedar Rapids Transit. To answer the question, you really have four major areas that that generate ridership on this current route. The south end, that's the Meadowview Grand Area, Walmart, major destination, Hy-Vee area, and then the Zoor Apartments. And then as we go through the residential areas, it's kind of scattered as far as ridership goes. So there's no question Walmart is a major destination, but it's also of the three options that were proposed, the most costly destination option that we have on the table for you as well.
Yeah. So you you clarified, Brad, also the other areas that are prime originating locations. I guess I'd say it that way. In in this, whether it be option A or option C, a person who, let's say, the residents is on the south side of Marion, they can use microtransit if to connect to a location where they could pick up the fixed route bus, correct?
Right. And that's that's how we see the microtransit really filling in, is that the areas away from the fixed line route would be fed by the microtransit. But if they have a, you know, origin and destination within Marion itself, that's where the microtransit comes into play. So and the difference between the A and C is that A will get you to Uptown Marion, it can always be extended. That's the thing that's nice about that particular option. If we see that there's truly a demand down the road, it's just a matter of us add another bus and another driver to extend that farther along the route and keep that fifteen-minute frequency that we have on on that corridor.
Thanks. What do you have something? Well, what we didn't hear about, though, Kesha and Brad, is the what's the impact, like the cost to the rider? And how does that impact these these cost numbers, the numbers that you shared with us?
And so Cedar Rapids Transit.
Is that factored in already to to these, to the cost of the city? What the rider pays?
No. The the rider would still have the their fee at the at the pickup.
Right. Does that impact the ultimate?
That is, yes. So the the cost, Horizons has built that into their structure is an assumption of ridership, and then kind of what that would bring back.
So the cost that you've shared with us incorporates the the fees paid by the rider?
Horizon has it broken into there?
The the cost, Mayor, just so I'm I'm clear, because can you go to to the cost slide or the that one? Mayor, are you asking if the ridership cost is factored into the nine hundred? There are individual fares that the riders would have to pay.
Right. And and so that's factored into this, that's already accounted for here?
Yes, that is part of Horizons submiddle of what we're basing their numbers off of, does assume a fair assumption that that gets deducted from.
My question. Okay. Thank you. And and so if somebody uses a combination like Grant mentioned, somebody uses a combination of train of the microtransit to get to the bus. And then, so there's fares associated with both? How is that compared to what they're paying now?
And that would be something, sorry, I'll hand that over to Brad.
So and Kelsey, if you need to clarify as well, the fares on the fixed route service, we reduced those recently. It was a dollar fifty and seventy-five cents on the fixed line route for full fare and in our half fares. When we went back to fare collection, we because we've been doing free fares since the pandemic started back in March of, what was it, twenty twenty? We went ahead and restart when we resumed fare collection back in September, we reduced our base fare to a dollar for adults and students unless they participate in student-sponsored fare programs, which Cedar Rapids Community School District Kirkwin Co. participated in. Otherwise, we went to a half fare, our half fare went to a free fare for elderly, disabled Medicaid Medicare passengers. We have an income-based program as well. And so it's a free fare or a dollar now for our system. And then we have two-dollar day passes. And so, Kelsey, if you want to jump in, we we're looking at make trying to make sure we have a free fare or a free transfer system between our two services. So if someone uses, buys a day pass and they are getting off the bus, say, in Uptown Marion, and they need to transfer to one of Kelsey's buses, they would honor that as a transfer. And we would do the same thing as far as anyone's coming off of an NTS bus in Marion. We would honor that as a free transfer. Passenger gets down GTC or wherever they're going to go, they have to go ahead and take care of a fare there. But we're looking to try to make it as simple as burdenless as possible for passenger making.
And when you've mentioned Kelsey's bus, that that's the microtransit.
Correct.
Okay, so your free transfer between the two. Okay.
Yeah.
That answers my question on that. So thank you very much. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I mean, I like I like what A and C are doing is getting people directly downtown instead of having to go to Twixtown and transfer and spend more time waiting in that bus stop. So I think that's a positive. So the difference between A and C basically is extending Route Five to the east side to pull in Walmart.
Right.
You know, so that, I mean, that's, you're talking a quarter million dollars to add that. But if I'm a resident and I want to just go to Walmart, and I use the microbus just to go to Walmart and back, I mean, doesn't that even seem sometimes more convenient? I mean, when we talked about this whole thing, we're trying to say, how do we reach people to get them to places where we're currently not doing? I think one, the bus, the main bus line is adding some some direction and length to it. And then if you add the microbus, I think that adds to it as well. Because I some of the discussion we had months ago was how do we get service east of Highway thirteen? And the main bus service, the Cedar Rapids Bus Service is not going to do that, but the microbus service will. So that'll get, if somebody's working out there, they live in Marion, somebody's working out there, we can get them out there. Or if somebody works in Cedar Rapids and works out, it's a legacy. They can get into Marion and then essentially use the microbus service to do the final leg.
It's it's often returned referred to as a first mile, last mile.
Yeah.
Because fixed route works for a lot of people, but it's just getting that last distance to the bus stop. And that's where the microtransit really fills that gap in.
Yeah, based upon what what you're explaining, I mean, A, C, I'm not sure if it adds for a quarter million dollars. I mean, I understand a lot of people go to Walmart, but we can still get them to Walmart with A.
And that that C option is like, and very easy to add on to if there
We can always.
Find there's a demand for it down the road, it can be extended.
And I feel like the other thing to notice too is that C option would take the microtransit bus count down to two.
Two, yeah.
Three. And so it would potentially increase wait times for the overall service.
Yeah, yeah, I like that idea. That's right. That's the other difference of
We're we're
A has three microbus services and the other one C has two. So, yeah, I understand that as well. Okay.
And they they built this so they can be interchangeable. It it doesn't have to be. Sorry. Sorry, staff's recommendation is going, if we're going fully out to Walmart with a fifteen-minute, then we would go down to the the two microbuses, because you do have that complete east-west connection to town. It is adaptable completely. I mean, we could take any of the the first two options down to two buses with service. Increase option C to three buses. As Kelsey said, it it lessens your wait time, the more buses you have at the ready. So it's it's an option. These are, these are just staff's recommendation pairings fixed route with microtransit.
Well, our whole goal is to add to to have an enhanced service to our Marion residents. And I think all three do that. The question is which one is also the most cost-effective for all of our citizens, but yet have adding that enhanced service. And I think I I do like the recommendation of A as well. I understand why that is probably number one.
Okay, go ahead, Will.
I have a few questions for the microtransit. What's the cost for the rider to ride the microtransit?
Yeah, that's a great question. Again, Kelsey Bedwell, Program and Outreach Director for Horizons, Neighborhood Transportation Service. The cost for the rider of the microtransit we decided for equity should be the exact same cost as the public transit bus. And so it would match the paratransit fare. So it'd be two dollars. And we would stay within that paratransit fare, so that if we filled the gap or supported that in some ways, we'd be falling in compliance. So.
Okay. And then if I remember correctly, when we talked about this a year ago, whatever it was, if somebody, if someone can request the microtransit by app, or they can go online on the computer, or they can call a phone number to request the bus, correct?
Yep.
Okay. And then can you go to the slide that had the breakdown for the for the levy? So it's twenty-six dollars on.
Oh, okay.
There you go. So so the first one, residential, two hundred, it was twenty-six dollars a month plus nine dollars?
A year.
I meant a year, yeah.
Would be an additional
Year, sorry, not a month.
Yes, it would be an additional twenty-six dollars.
Plus nine.
Plus the nine.
And then Leanne said something about this is the city's portion. What what else is there?
School district, county. So this is, if we were to take your overall tax bill and just break out the levy that we, the city controls, fourteen dollars and something, this is the the impact of the city's levy portion only. It's just an estimate. It's illustrative purposes, so you can understand kind of the impacts of decision-making.
There's no other cost anywhere else. It's just this, just the transit levy.
This is just the transit.
Did, yeah. Yeah, okay. You confused me when you said just the city, maybe you think that there was something else.
We we can control if the school districts or the county does anything else that's going to fluctuate the the tax bills. One, one thing to add in, as we talk about the micro microbus replacement, as part of the initial ARPA, our ARPA dollar plan, we do have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside for acquisition of the buses. So that microbus replacement impact would be to replace down the road. So we have the initial, and then we also supported a grant application for an initial acquisition for buses.
Cedar Rapids was the pairing up with Horizons to to write that. So unknown
Yeah.
So Kesha, option B was maintaining what we have now and then adding microtransit?
Yes.
Okay, and that okay. Just looking at the difference in cost there. Is what's the difference in cost again?
About thirty thousand.
So is there some sense in 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 having, maintaining what we have and adding the so to help people transition to that, to this new model?
I would say that's the only my perspective, that is kind of the the only benefit of of keeping with that one-hour circular is the is the transition.
Yeah.
But again, I I think for service-wise, the the pairing is best with that uptown connection, and then having microtransits are the majority of of stops.
Go ahead.
What's the lifespan of the microtransit buses? What what do you think? That is?
On average, three years.
Okay.
So just depending on mileage, though, this is a smaller zone than NTS has ever operated in, because we would be limited to the exact Marion zone. So we'd have to determine that specifically.
Sure. Okay. And then what you mentioned, somebody mentioned some special fares or reduced fares earlier. Could you just recap those again, what what they would be?
For Cedar Rapids Transit, our our base fare is a dollar for adults and students for, and then we have free fares for pretty much all other categories, elderly, disabled, Medicare, and income-based, lower-income individuals. So it's a dollar or free for the most part for our system.
Yeah.
Thank you for putting this all together. I think it's a something we take for granted in the community that things things are happening and where you need to get. But this is a lot of coordination to deliver these services, and it's not unnoticed. I work for the Y, and I know we looked when we originally were trying to get folks to the Y on a route, and how do we get a bus route to that location? And and it is a discussion we have often with we're we're asked that a lot from our parent groups and, you know, how to make sure the populations have access to our services. And we looked at the we we know that a larger bus route adding that in is just not a working piece to it, but we need it to happen. So I appreciate these opportunities and options you've provided. Just these are, these are really miniscule questions, so my apologies, but I always tend to go through like a whole process in my brain when I look at these. So is there on the micro, so it's a it's a it's a bus, it's a it's a smaller bus, you could be with it, I think, like almost like an airport shuttle, you could be with somebody else, you could be making other stops other places with folks to get you where you need to be. It's not a, it's not an Uber, just to direct out, right? You can have to stop a few potentially.
Correct. Yeah, it'd be a shared ride service. So the bus sizes are fourteen or below. So in the worst-case scenario, you'd be sharing a bus with twelve other people, but we can also limit those capacities.
Okay. And then is there a limit on the age of a rider alone?
And we don't have a specific limit. We would usually, we're going to try to mimic the City of Cedar Rapids Transit in all ways. And so it's a an equal experience on here. So Brad, I don't remember your exact limits on age.
We we don't really have an age limit. We say anyone aged five and under, we would hope would have a responsible passenger with them. So that we aren't getting a young child dropped off by, you know, drive by themselves, but we don't truly have an age limit.
One thing to point out with microtransit is you do have to schedule by phone or web or app. So it's going to be very unlikely that a four or five-year-old will be scheduling their own rides. So there will be like a responsible adult plugged into it.
I just hope that it is somebody who schedules it, puts their child on it, and sends them off to another location. And I know it sounds silly, but people have continued to amaze me on sometimes on decisions that are made. So that's why I was just kind of curious as we work through this. And I know but microtransit wouldn't be used necessarily for in the way that transportation is used for the schools, like Cedar Rapids uses the regular buses for some of the schools. So on a microtransit scenario, if you're talking about discounts with schools, if somebody would use it, we wouldn't see that happening yet, would we? I mean, Linmar, I mean, we already have a regular bus goes by.
There there, we do have a lot of students utilize the Cedar Rapids Transit buses. And we have a student-sponsored fare program, Cedar Rapids Community School District is a partner with that. So they pay a certain amount in which then their students can show their IDs and ride for free. But it's it's a regular city bus route. It's not a designated school bus.
Right. So would you envision, and maybe again, I'm overthinking this, we'll just let it go. But I think about people who are upset at the school district has increased how far you walk, like the busing districts, right? And so I can schedule microtransit for my child to take that bus from our house to school drop-off, to it, to the schools?
Periodically, yes. So microtransit is fully open to the public. And so anyone can use it. Those are where microtransit's a really unique model, because there's a lot of evaluating and zones and codes you can put in. And so we could at some point encourage that and want microtransit to be a solution for people who may not be within school busing, but would still need it. But it's also something that we would look at, supply and demand in the beginning. So it could be a concern, but I wouldn't foresee like an entire vehicle or an entire route dedicated to that at the time being. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
I say I'm probably thinking too deep. I'm true, thinking of too many scenarios. I just, it's kind of an amazing process, really. When you think about what's available for folks, so.
There's a lot of options and processes in it, which is exciting.
Yeah, I think it's opening up the options to to more residents. Any other questions? Orion, go ahead.
Just thank you, Mayor, just to add on to Councilwoman Mensers' question that, you know, once, once we get a sense of clarity and we start working on memorializing and then get some finality as it relates That, you know, once, once we get a sense of clarity and we start working on memorializing and then get some finality as it relates to this. As we start to utilize it as a community, then we will be able to understand. What are, what, what are some other potentials and partnerships? So, you know, I, I do know that. Uh, at, at one point, um, there was, you know, bus driver shortages. Um, and you know, is this, does this now become something that helps, helps our, our partners in the community? So. Once we get it in place and up and running, then we can kind of see where we can, we, we can further reach higher. So.
Brad, go ahead. Either one of them, the route map. So one of the things I wanted to point out is one of the, one of the partners that's not represented here is Lynn County Lifts. And they are our pair of transit contractor. So by law ADA, we are, as a fixed shop provider, we're required to have a complimentary. ADA pair of transit service. And so that's a partnership that's included in my fully allocated cost model. So that number that you have up there incorporates the Lynn County Lifts. Pair of transit as well. Um, and when we had the route before that, or the current route, and you know, it circulates, it's a circulator and. We're required to provide at least that, that pair of transit service to individuals who cannot use the fixed route bus, not because of by choice, but because they. Have a physical or cognitive disability that prevents them from utilizing the service. Well, we have a three quarter mile envelope, which covers pretty much most of Marion, um, as far as how that pair of transit eligibility zone works as well. Um, go back to the, what we're proposing. So if we looked at this one, that three quarter mile envelope is smaller because we're not covering as much as the, the, the city of Marion. But we've worked with, we're working with, with lifts. We have an agreement with lifts that we will continue that pair. We have. If Marion, the city of Marion has that fixed route component, which you would with one of these options, you'll also have that pair of transit component as well. So we're not going to necessarily shrink that. Down if you were to go along with this, this, uh, option here. Uh, we're still planning on serving the existing pretty, pretty much grandfathered individuals in. That would be eligible for, for service now. We would, we would continue that, um, uh, with, with this option as well.
Well.
Was it considered to stay the way it is? Cause it's half a million dollar addition to the budget to.
That, that is, that is, um. That is, that, no, that, right, correct. That, I mean, that is an option for the council to discuss. Um, and provide us with the direction. We are operating under the direction to explore options on expanding that service. Um, even if, uh, council directs us to go, one of the recommended options. As we continue to build the budget, once we get, you know, as Leanne mentioned, after January, we get the valuations and we get the departmental requests and we have our. Our, um, our, our budget retreat in January. Um, the council will still have some opportunity to kind of further refine that because if, if it's something that ultimately it's. Not, you're not ready to commit to. And we have that option of just sticking with the existing fixed route.
Cause this would be for fiscal twenty four. So this wouldn't even start until next summer. Fiscal twenty.
Okay. Good question. Any other questions? So what are you looking for, uh, tonight? Or is it for, or is it Thursday tonight? Direction? Okay. And the, the staff or the, uh, tra- traffic advisor committee recommendation is, is option A, you said? Okay. So is there anyone who is opposed to option A or the staff pursuing, pursuing option A, developing that further? Anybody have strong opinion against that? Is there another, another option that? You'd like to see put forward?
Go ahead. I'll just say, uh, out of the three options that were presented, option A makes the most sense to me or staying the way it is. So those would be my two.
So that option remains, but you, as they develop option A, we'd still have the option to.
To not do it yet.
To not go forward.
Yeah. And, and as we, so what we will do is after this meeting, we'll begin the conversations with our partners. To craft and, cause Cedar Rapids Transit, they're in the same budget cycle as us. So they need to know kind of where we're at. Um, what this allows us to do is actually start having the conversations on what that twenty eighty looks like and think about. So we're not putting counsel in a box, but we're also not, um, uh, I mean, cause we've got, uh, Horizons and CRT that need to. Work on their budgets as well. So the goal would be have a document that we can flex on when we get to January. And we have a much clearer picture of the, the budgetary impacts. Once we get the valuation, once we have the budget, the departmental requests and all those things. Then they will shake out. So this gives us some flexibility. It's not a council final decision tonight. This just gives us what we need to do to. Continue to our work on the budget. So.
Okay. Any other thoughts or? Questions? Okay. Brad, Kelsey, Kesha, thank you so much for working together.
Thank you.
We've always found that partnerships, uh, produce the best results for, 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 for all of us and for, for the residents that we serve. So. Thank you very much for all your work on it. This is actually excited, very exciting. Um, the potential, I think for. Uh, serving the residents in a much better way, I think is, uh, is, is great here with this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. All right. Next we have Chief Fagan. With a presentation. Hi, Chief.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. Well, it is my pleasure, uh, to come before you this evening, uh, as I start my seventh week here, uh, with the department and. Uh, for the past six weeks, uh, been doing a lot of listening. Uh, I've been calling it my listening tour, a lot of soaking in. Uh, great information, uh, from not only to the department, um, but the executive team. And also during the transition, uh, interim chief reader as well and our command staff. So tonight we're bringing, uh, three key items that we'd like to have a conversation with you about. First of all. Um, we're going to provide you, uh, with recommended department action plans over the next eighteen months. And so with new formal leadership within the department, all of this listening, uh, is we're going to per, per prompt. What are the next steps for the Marion Fire Department to ensure we continue to provide great quality services to our community? And support our firefighters who are protecting it. So we're going to talk about those action plans, uh, first of all. Uh, secondly, the bullet item there, you'll see what is our standards of cover. And that may sound like something funny, um, but it's, it isn't a mystical thing. It isn't a magical thing. It's actually what is our risk plan to protect our community in regards to responding to emergencies to protect lives and property. And so that is our service level. And so that's something that we're going to have a conversation on and what that looks like currently. Uh, what the staffing at our current stations looks like, and if there's any gaps there. And as a follow up to that, we're going to, uh, provide a recommended action to optimize that standards of cover. To make sure that we're maximizing the resources most effectively that we have funded today. Um, and I'm very fortunate, uh, to partner with Rachel Mortough, City IT GIS. Um, who, uh, is going to show some power geospatial data that's differential data. And some of the information that you may have seen in the past, uh, but that is consistent with quality practices in the fire service across the country. So with that, like I said, I'm excited. We'll go ahead and get started with this, this first action plan. So the first item that I have identified on here is to formalize our department direction for the future. As I mentioned over the last several weeks, um, and actually months even leading up to, uh, me coming to the community. Um, there's been a transition here. And so what we need to do is that we need to formalize. A departmental level strategic plan. And I did say strategic plan, and you may be confused because just a few weeks ago, we talked about a city strategic plan. Well, this department level strategic plan or a business plan for our business. Uh, is very critical to the functions that we're going to take to continue to move the service forward. So this will dovetail into the city's overarching corporate plan. Um, but one of the pieces that's a part of this would be a community engagement. And that's the piece, that's the key that we need next. We've got to reach out to our external stakeholders. And bring them with us on this departmental business plan. And so this departmental, community driven strategic plan. Would be facilitated by professional services, uh, to engage our external stakeholders as well as our internal stakeholders. To identify our strategic initiatives over the next five years. We'll reaffirm our mission, vision and values. As we turn the page into the next chapter of the Marion Fire Department. The next item I have on here is workforce stabilization. I mentioned the standards of cover and one of the things that we've got to do is ensure that we have a stable workforce. To where our workforce is not continuously being mandatorily required to fill overtime slots. We've got to have a stable workforce that can supply. The current service level that's in place. And so, um, phase one of two is to request three firefighters. One per shift, uh, while also pursuing grant opportunities through FEMA, through a safer grant. Now those grants are not guaranteed. Uh, but there are definitely opportunities for us to support, um, the funding of these positions over the next three years. Is what that assistance would, would provide support for. Uh, but again, it's not guaranteed. Uh, but that grant if awarded would provide some assistance over the next three years. Third item on here is to complete CAD integration. Um, I'm sure you've heard about the, uh, the CAD project with. The police department and MCOM. Uh, we need to maximize our, our station and learning capabilities with the new CAD. And what that will do is ensure that we have good, uh, work cycles, proper notification. This will actually optimize our response even further by leveraging the technology and the power of the information. That can be at our fingertips in the stations and on our mobile devices as well. Fourth item is a redesigned organizational structure. As we're moving into the future, we need to make sure that our workforce is supported with an organizational structure to ensure that they're optimizing their performance. And so phase one would include, uh, one chief officer this year, uh, and then phase two would come into the next year. And then the final item for this action plan is to publish an emergency operations plan or an EOP and also a continuity of operations plan. Um, this is one thing that I spoke to Ryan about. Pretty early in my time here was, uh, an emergency operations plan. And this is absolutely something that this community needs and it needs quick, based on its recent past, uh, with community disasters. And we need to be. Ready for the next one. And so this is something that we're going to need outsourced with some professional services to get in place. But we absolutely need to have it and it needs to happen quickly. And it will dovetail into. Lynn County Emergency Management Agency's county wide EOP. So, uh, we'll be partnering with them to ensure that we're working in concert with them as well. Okay. Moving into the next, um, landing period here. So you'll see some phase two periods here. So. Workforce stabilization. So we need a total of six firefighters over the next two years. To get where we need to be with our current service level. And so this is the second phase, one per shift to get us there again, while pursuing that FEMA safer grant. Additionally, um, the second phase of the redesigned organizational structure, the additional chief officer. And a half FTE civilian to get us where we need to be administratively, analytically to where we are out front. And not working as a reactive organization, but a proactive organization looking forward. Next item on here is community research, a community risk assessment and standards of cover. So I talked about a standards of cover and that's going to. Mean more to you here in just a moment when I show you some things. But a community risk assessment, we're going to be talking about vulnerable populations tonight. In fact, the, the presentation just before this one talked about. Uh, accessibility of transportation and micro transit. What are the factors of community intelligence that can show us where our vulnerable areas are and what is our ability to engage that risk? From an emergency services perspective. This community risk assessment would be something that really gives us that. Micro level community intelligence to ensure that we have the ability to engage our community. And provide quality emergency response performance to meet the expectations of the community. As a part of that, we would also be evaluating the emergency medical services program. And that is something that I absolutely anticipate to come out of the community driven strategic plan. Is to find out what is the future of that look like in our community. The next one, professional development and succession planning initiatives. As we look at our attrition schedules within the department. We have a, a significant amount of our formal leadership within the department that's nearing retirement. And so we need to be prepared to fill those positions with highly trained professional. Employees to make sure that we're, we're positioned well for the future. And then lastly is the construction of the training tower. This is something that we've been looking forward to. Uh, we're already working with our partners, uh, in the area and in the department to ensure that, uh, this will meet the needs of the department. As we move into the future. All right. So that's, we'll have time for questions and comments, uh, at the end there, but I wanted to get that in front of you. I know there's some supplemental information in your packet as well, a little bit further detail on each one of those bulleted items. So then the next thing that we're talking about is the standards of cover. And so, uh, we've got maps. Uh, here, we've got a map here and I know there's a packet of maps that you have in front of you as well. Uh, I'm going to. Set the stage here for Rachel a little bit, but, uh, before you start digging too, too far ahead here, I want to talk about the standards of cover concept. And so first to orientate you to what's on the map, we have, as you'll probably recognize, the city of Marion is on this map. And then around it, we also have this bold, uh, black line boundary. And what this is, is this represents the entire response coverage area. Of the Marion Fire Department. So this large geographical area is actually the area of coverage that we're providing services to. So within that, you'll see there's three, uh, color shaded dots. Each one of those, the yellow dot represents the station that's in the north, the blue dot represents the station. Uh, to the west and the red dot represents the station to the east. Around each one of those dots is what's called a polygon or a shaded area. What that shaded area represents is the travel time capability from each one of those stations. At four minutes. And so that is the capability of response time from each one of those stations. Now that's a computer simulation that's done through GIS. So that's the power of geospatial data. And so what we can do is we can leverage this type of technology to see what our capabilities are. And what our limitations are in regards to response performance. It's important to know that these shaded areas are a computer, uh, simulation, number one. Number two, it's under the assumption, again, this is about capability. It's under the assumption that it's a bright and sunny day and not snowy and icy outside like it is tonight, right? That definitely impacts traffic. After, under, or travel time. Uh, another one is traffic. Well, how does traffic potentially impact our travel time? And then another piece is. Utilization of resources. If we have emergency call volume, these blankets or these polygons are constantly in flux. If we have a call in a certain area of the community, there is a hole that comes up in our, in our standards of cover. That blanket of coverage that we are providing to the community. So this is, these polygons are constantly evolving all the time. Based on what is happening, whether it's in the environment, on a roadway network or the demand on our services. So as we look forward into the, into the future on future slides here, it's important to have a basis for what you're seeing on the maps. And what these coverages represent. So let's talk about four minutes. Why four minutes? Uh, why not five? Why not six? Why not three? Well, four minutes is the quality practice standard by the fire, National Fire Protection Association standard NFPA seventeen ten. And so as the quality practice standard, that is the quality measure that we're using. To benchmark what our capabilities are for a service level to the community. So, um, that's some information about a standards of cover. So as we're moving into the next slide. We're going to see how that looks like, what that looks like with some service gaps. So you'll see two red ovals on the slide. And so we have a red oval up into the, the northeast part of the community. And what this red oval is, uh, is historically a coverage area where. Fire station four through previous conversations has been identified to address this coverage area. Um, with me coming in, learning about the community, uh, this was an opportunity for me to connect with. Um, Terrell from IT and to learn about what were the, the GIS capabilities. Of our community and our cities and our team. And I have been just so pleasantly surprised to see the capabilities of what we're able to quickly identify. And so we were able to also find this area to the southwestern portion of our, of our city. Uh, to see what, what this type of gap looks like. And so with that, I'm going to set the stage for, uh, Rachel. She's going to come up and talk to you about. Uh, these additional slides after this, but as we're looking at community data, these two geographical areas. This is the power of community intelligence. So we see these gaps on a map. But what, what are in these gap areas? And what story does that tell us to inform us to make good decisions, potentially the future, and first of all, to optimize our service. To make sure that we're providing the best service possible with the resources that we have. But then also to inform us. What do we need to be watching for as we move into the future? How is that going to guide us to make future decisions? And those are things that we're going to have future conversations about. Through a community risk assessment, standards of cover. And those are things that we're going to have future conversations about through your community risk assessment standards of cover and through the community driven strategic planning process as well. And so again, to set the stage for Rachel, as she's coming to the to the podium here, I want to talk about the link between vulnerable populations and emergency services. And so when we we talk about our vulnerable populations, these are the populations within our community that are that are the most vulnerable for emergency events. They may not have readily access to transportation. They may not have readily access to healthcare. They may not have readily access to insurance. And so when they have an emergency event, the impacts to them potentially are significantly different than to other areas of the communities. And so what we need to do is make sure that we are aware where these populations are and to see what that risk looks like within our community to see if there's any opportunities for enhancement. And so with that, I'm going to introduce Rachel Murtaugh. One of the rock stars at City IT and she is going to show you some very interesting information as we move into the future. So thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, Chief City Council Mayor. Nice to be here for the first time. Um, some of the data that I'm going to show you is it's all taken from the 2020 census. Some of the data is at the census block group level and some of it is at the census tract level. So the data you'll see, sometimes it can be frustrating to look at different levels. But the US Census does not analyze every single variable at a defined detail level like a block or a block group. So the definitions of those two are in your packets, but overall, a census tract is made up of multiple block groups. And so you're kind of looking at a larger view and and just smaller view. The social vulnerability index was analyzed, actually using data at the census tract level. And it's a really powerful tool to look at measuring the social dimensions in our communities. And the one that I performed is looking at variables that impact not just economic hardship, but also natural disaster like Duracho and even the disparities in service access that we can see. So just looking at some numbers, that northern gap that we mentioned, so up there by Echo Hill and Indian Creek, the total addresses there are six hundred and fifty-six with three hundred and twenty-five of those currently not covered by that four minute blanket that chief was talking about. When we look at the block groups census of that area, we're looking at just over seventeen hundred as the estimated population. Six hundred and seventy-one housing units. If we zoom out a little bit and we look at the census tract level, the total population for the census tract is five thousand seven hundred and sixteen. Of that group, over thirteen hundred are over the age of sixty-five and almost four hundred and fifty are under the age of eighteen or those are considered the dependent age group. When we look at those two kind of, those two vulnerability variables that can really impact the need for emergency services, we're looking at four point six percent of that population has a disability, one point three percent of that population does not have access to any vehicle. And then we're looking at percent unemployment, one point three percent in that census tract. I encourage you, if you turn to page three in your map packet, you can stay on these numbers in the northern gap as I move to the southern gap. That way it's easier to compare numbers between those two. When we look at the, I can give you time to get there if you want.
Got it.
As we look at the southern gap, we're looking at seven hundred and seventy-four addresses compared to six hundred and fifty-six with two hundred and sixty-two of those currently not covered by the four minute blanket. And then a population estimate, again, by census block group at forty-one hundred and over seventeen hundred housing units in that southern gap. The census tract population, it is much larger because there is a couple of large census tract to the east part of this. So we're looking at fourteen, over fourteen thousand in the census tract and you'll be able to see how large that one is in the next slide. Over thirty-one hundred seniors, almost three thousand children at the age of eighteen compared to thirteen hundred and four hundred and fifty, under four hundred and fifty in the northern gap. But when we look at really percent of disability, we can see that compared to four point six percent in the northern gap, we're looking at a minimum of six point seven percent disability in the southern. And again, when we look at vehicle access, the northern gap has one point three percent vehicle act, lack of vehicle access. Here we're looking at a minimum of three point five all the way up to almost ten percent of the population not having access to a vehicle. When we look at percent unemployment, one point two to five point five as compared to one point three percent in the northern gap. So there is quite a bit of difference in these areas. And I will also say because of the difference in block group versus census tract, don't try to add up the population numbers. They're not going to add up because we're looking at different levels of population. You make your head spin if you try to do that math, it won't work out. Numbers are fine and dandy, but maps can really tell a story that numbers can't. So here's our actual Marion Social Vulnerability Index. Also included in your map packet with this image is the table of variables used to calculate this. Not just looking at population or or income, we looked at, I looked at multiple variables, including population, income, poverty, race, language, immigration status, housing status, and then also disability and vehicle access. So in this case, red is the highest risk areas and going all the way to green, which is our lowest risk. And so we can see a distinct pattern with the southwest area showing the highest risk for vulnerability. And again, that's for economic or disaster or servicing. If I want to pull out those last two variables just by themselves, this is just the percent of population with disability according to census tract. And again, we can see a trend with the highest rate being in the southwestern part of Marion. And you can see that kind of larger green census tract there. And then the lowest rate of disability being up actually in that northern gap. If we look at vehicle access, and this is also kind of interesting considering the transit conversation that we all just had. There's also the least amount of vehicle access in that southwestern and western portion. That bright red spot is just barely in the Marion District, but because it touched the border, it was included. And so here you can again see lowest vehicle access in red, orange and yellow, highest access in dark green showing up in that northern area. I'm happy to take any questions on methods or to explain further on anything.
I guess I don't have specific questions about the complement of data that you've pulled together in order to provide this representation, but I I think given the factors that are shown on the map really changes the context on which we have to think about our fire response or emergency response. And I suppose there's elements of this that even would be informative to police department as well. So Chief, I already shared this with you when I saw this data last week or this in in our packet. This is, this is just an astounding workup and and analysis and I really appreciate it.
And it's it's incredible if if anyone basically has an interest in a variable of our population. The census was pretty thorough. I can probably find an answer.
You want to also have questions? I don't have a question, but I think this is fascinating and I'd love that we're doing this because then it ultimately leads leads to well founded decision making. Which is the best for for our community and our residents. So we can have confidence we're making good decisions when we do this kind of analysis. So that's great. Thank you, Rachel.
Okay, so really what she shared with you actually, even though there is a large amount of rich data, there is really a teaser for what's to come and the community risk assessment standards of cover in the future. But this information can inform us to to make some decisions as Ryan was sharing earlier, you know, departments are planning. They are looking at the future as a part of the budget process. And as I'm learning about CIP projects that are in place currently, Station Three where exists now is currently funded with five hundred thousand for renovation in the CIP. And so with this community intelligence, does this provide any intel that we may need to reconsider opportunities to relocate it to maximize the service coverage area with the community? Is that a better long term investment? And that is the recommendation from me is to investigate those opportunities and create plans to relocate Station Three from its current location at Sixth Street and Eighth Avenue to a more effective deployment location. We don't have those locations for you tonight. That's not something that we're bringing or proposing at this point. But really it's to start that next step. What does that look like for us as we look into the future? And what that means is we would relocate, construct a new station for the future in a better strategic location to optimize our current coverage. And then relocate the resources at to that new location, our three firefighters and the apparatus to that location for a better service coverage. So to capture that that funding and then while still also continuing to evaluate opportunities for Station Four in the Northeast, that is something we need to continue to to plan for and keep keep an eye on. But I absolutely know that we will get more community feedback from our community driven strategic planning process that will help steer us as we move forward to towards those things. So that's that's the presentation that that we have for you quite a bit that we've presented to you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions, but please anticipate based on, you know, the feedback that that I'm getting from you tonight for us to be begin bringing action to these items that we've proposed to you as a part of our action plan.
Just to be clear, your priority would be looking at relocating Station Three before we look at doing anything with Station Four.
That's correct. Yes.
Just to be clear for everybody. Yep.
That's correct.
Okay, any questions, comments? Go ahead, Sarah. Yes.
I'll just reiterate, it's fascinating. And I mean, I think you caught us all because we're all still staring at the charts, trying to figure out where all these things are and looking at the details. So thank you, Rachel, for putting this information together because again, it's, and I know this is a short presentation that took a lot of work to put together. So we appreciate the information on that. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, relative to Station Three and its relocation, does that substantially delay the timing that we would need to consider a Station Four? Or are they unrelated? Are those actions unrelated?
I would say that they're unrelated. Right now, the plan is to to begin moving towards the land on Station Four. And I think that there there's some action being taken on that to identify where they exactly would be. And then future conversations to to get towards staffing that, what are the resources that would be positioned there? But there's some real key community conversations that we need to have that are going to come out of this community driven strategic plan. What does the future service level look like for the city? What are the programs and the services that the fire department is going to provide? And what are the expectations and the concerns that the community has today as we move towards the future? I think that will help us communicate with you on that type of what that pace looks like. But it's absolutely something that we are watching very closely, but of the two right now, my recommendation is to optimize our current approved service level at three stations with three firefighters from each one of them. We need to make sure that we're providing high quality services and maximizing that potential for best protection for the community.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I obviously you're showing a big gap on the southern side. So talking about where Station Number Three should be is relevant. I mean, again, it was built there in sixty-four, which was the appropriate location, you know, you know, sixty years ago. But maybe not today as the city continues to expand. But you talked about this community driven strategic plan. Give us a little more feedback on the community driven part on how that's going to come about, when it's going to come about, because what I have in my mind may not be what's on yours. So if you can fill in some of the blanks for me, I'd appreciate that part.
Yes. Boy, this is stuff that I get really excited about, strategic work. So a community driven strategic plan is will be something that would be facilitated by a third party, professional services. They would come in and gather data from our external stakeholders. So different factions of the communities, citizens, partners, all of all of the external stakeholders within the community that we partner with. So they are going to gather data from those groups, identify, do a SWOT analysis, what are the expectations, all of those things, program prioritization. They're going to organize that data and then they're going to bring that internally within the fire department. Then we're going to have an internal stakeholder group that has diverse representation of rank tenure personnel, and we are going to also do an internal analysis. Now, I would say up to this point from the listening sessions that I've been doing over the last several weeks and even some survey data internally prior to that, we've got a good amount of that data. And so we're just going to bring that in along with this internal stakeholder group in order to create strategic initiatives with the merging of this data together. And what do we need to focus on over the next five years? Both at a strategic initiative level, objectives and then critical tasks. I completely anticipate one of those will be workforce planning. What are the services that we're providing as I shared with you earlier? What is the future of EMS look like in the city of Marion? Those would be things that are not fast action items that will take further work conversations. There also could be some data that's gathered from the community on what does our response performance look like? The standards of cover at your that you're seeing there, that's the response capabilities with the bright shiny day, right? What does our actual response performance look like, which may look like something else entirely? That's what we may not know, we don't know yet in some of those spaces on data analytics. That will develop further as a part of the community risk assessment standards of cover.
I think one of the overall aspects that I I really appreciate tonight is that, again, kind of like the mayor was talking about, is we're talking about using all of this data to drive our decisions. I mean, nowhere I, nowhere was it on our radar, or have we had a discussion talking about relocating Station Number Three? All of our CIP was talking about just adding another four station, therefore we got four fire stations and that ought to be enough to cover everything. But now you've got the the GIS information, the data to really drive all of this. And so to me, that is very good for your department and and very good for us as a city council. So I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay, anything else, Chief?
Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good job. Hey, our next item is an update from our city engineer on Fourth Avenue.
I got some help too. All right, so a little background, about a month ago, the school district came to us and asked to make Fourth Avenue a one way. And so we had a attack report that came through City Council. City Council concurred with that and we made Fourth Avenue a one way. And so this is just kind of a status update. And so I have Officer Brian Davis here to kind of tell you how things are working.
All right, so from a simple boots on the ground, day to day, what I've seen between this year since we've gone to a one way, there was initial there was a little bit of a confusion initially, which was expected when we when we went Fourth Avenue one way. As far as last year, it was chaos. We talked about that. There are people, you know, parents that are they're up and down thirteenth, they're up and down fourth. They're just scattered around and there was no rhyme or reason to where they were going to pick up their kids. That created a lot of confusion when kids were exiting the school. As far as visibility, kids are going across in between cars, things of that nature. You can't see necessarily what's beyond the next car. There's other cars that are turning off of thirteenth. There's vehicles that are going eastbound. There's vehicles going westbound. So it created a lot of confusion. As far as now, that has cleared up. There's always room for improvement. However, what I've seen with the crosswalks with one way going westbound, the crosswalks The crosswalks, we have staff that are at those crosswalks that are holding kids. At those crosswalks until cars are stopped. And then and then allowing them to go across is a huge improvement. It's much safer and. Right now, I I think, you know, I I thank you for for allowing us to do that. And and complete that project and our school district is is a much safer place because of it.
Any questions for Officer Davis?
How is I I think I recall that we had some conversation and concern about thirteenth street. Resident access at various times during during the pickup and drop-off times. Any observations about that situation and how any any changes that we should contemplate relative to thirteen?
Yeah, I hear you there. So with thirteenth street, honestly. I don't see any real need to. Move forward and and either blocking that off or making it one-way. Right now, things are moving. We have parents utilizing thirteenth street appropriately. They are waiting. For direction from staff to either either direct them or they have clear visibility of. Of those vehicles that are stopped at. At that intersection at fourth and thirteenth. I honestly. Feel that leaving thirteenth street alone at this juncture is appropriate. I don't think changing anything with that is gonna is gonna help at this point.
Thank you. Sarah, that's Steve.
Him again, um, having been involved with the Safe Route to School Plan that developed this recommendation way back in the day. For came this far, I'm. Is there anything else besides the thirteenth conversation? Or from the recommendations, because this was a this was identified from outside sources as a not just this road, but kind of. The whole process as a. A problem waiting for a really tragic situation. So I applaud the district for moving forward on that plan and keeping it live and looking at these opportunities. After a couple of year pause. So is there anything else then that we need for this section that we need to address besides the thirteenth is there? The exit, the besides, and I think we had also talked about like the access points on walking or how kids were coming off and. To the. East, you know, how they're coming through and walking on those pieces. Is there anything else left on part of these recommendations that we can we should be looking at? Are we foresee coming? Are we just kind of sitting with this for now?
Honestly, I I think. Those those changes were were huge and made a make it a big impact. The only thing that I can really see that would really help is adding some, excuse me, some painted arrows on the. On the Fourth Avenue by twelfth street, but I believe that's that's the district, the district's responsibility. As far as I I understand, as far as that section is owned by the district on Fourth Avenue between twelfth and thirteenth. So right there at twelfth street, having painted arrows on the right lane or the north lane. Indicating going straight or right turn only. And then in the in the south lane of of Fourth Avenue, left turn only. Early on, I did see with that confusion of just that section being forth, being one-way. I did see parents trying to turn left. While other vehicles were in that left in that left or southbound lane at twelfth street, so. You'll have one car wanting to turn left or southbound. You'll have another car wanting to continue straight. And so obviously that that created a little bit of confusion at first. Thankfully, I have not seen any any accidents as a result of that. But that's something that I think should should happen sooner rather than later.
And then my only other little side note to this whole thing is I still have a very large, very popular with the young people, young kids, young kids. Walking school bus cut out with people in the thing in the handles. If any of your school caught the folks within the school can use my walking school bus thing, be happy to not have it in my garage.
A walking school bus.
It's a it's a huge cardboard cutout of a school bus. And it has handles on the side for the kids to carry so they can carry it like this and it looks like they're looking out a window. It's probably six feet. And about three plus feet high and it's yellow like a school bus and it's it's heavy. It's really cute and the kids, when we did the walking school buses. Would fight over who wanted to carry the school bus, the ones who were part of the, you know, they were who got to carry the bus.
Grant's amusement bike, you might want it.
He might, he might want that. So if you hear anybody who needs a project with the buses and walking safely or any of the sessions they're doing on safe. Whatever, I have a very large walking school bus that needs a home.
Alright, I'll let the district.
Okay, Steve and then great, uh, Steve and then Will, that's great.
Yeah, so so I'm a I'm a user of this area one or two days a week and and Officer Davis knows that. So I concur with your comments that Fourth Avenue is a lot better and I I don't see any need yet to do anything with thirst thirteenth street nor did I before. So I concur with that right now as well. Fourth Avenue, I'm assuming is only designed for just one lane of pickup. Right, it's never going to be designed for. Two, is that is that correct?
Correct. There's a couple of reasons for that. Right now, just that. To be the northbound lane of Fourth Avenue is the pickup only. That's still allow for emergency. Emergency vehicles to be able to respond on Fourth Avenue if they need to. Also allows for an egress for parents after they've picked up their their students. To to get out and around, so they're not trapped in there. One thing that I think that. And this is a matter of of teaching parents to continue to move down that that line. And not, you know, not block the intersection of thirteenth and fourth, but to move past past that area and just continue to work their way down. I think right now, some parents have a tendency to just sit there. In line, even though spaces opened up ahead of them, they'll just sit there and it'll. It it just, it kind of clogs things up. It slows things down. So that's just a matter of teaching our parents to. To just continue to move down that conga line. Excuse me, and with the with the pickup or the drop-off, that's two lanes. So we do two lanes just between. Thirteenth Street and Fourteenth Street.
Okay, so drop-off is two. Is just one.
Correct.
Is there any reason that we have not added more lineage on that street between twelfth and fourteenth? To separate the lanes? Is there is there enough lineage on that? I don't.
There's no lineage.
Yeah, I say that, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah, so is that is that an issue at all in your opinion?
I I haven't seen an issue. I think for the most part, parents have done a pretty good job. I think it would clear things up if if we added some arrows. Just indicating that this one-way ends. Now you have to either turn left if you're in this left lane or right or forward in the in the right lane.
So I think while we have. Improved this school zone area. I would say there's going to be a discussion item perhaps in the future around another school zone at Longfellow. Are you are you involved with that one as well?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's kind of turned in. They the parents lost the ability to park in the church parking lot recently, so.
Yep.
That's going to be a little bit of a mess.
And in the winter time, that's going to be even a bigger mess, so.
I yeah, I anticipate that's going to be a problem.
Yes.
So far, they're moving along. I I've. I've watched the last couple of weeks. So far, they're moving along pretty good, but I have noticed that there are some parents that end up stuck. Out on. Out on tenth or Eighth Avenue, stuck out on Eighth Avenue there. It's usually about five or six cars.
And about, I've seen it in both directions.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the problem. Thank you very much.
So I also have a child at Vernon and. I've not been part of the drop-off or pickup at. Dismissal time, but I'm there at five o'clock, four forty-five, five o'clock. Several times a week for picking up after basketball or football or whatnot. That's where I see problems. With the one with the one-way now, because there's no one there to help direct at that time. And you're getting folks that are in the school parking lot that's on the south side there that are. Going the wrong way to get out instead of going the whole way down. And I'm constantly still seeing people drive the wrong way at that time of the evening. In fact, last week, there was two kids on mopeds that went down the whole way to get into the parking lot the wrong way and. Of course, someone coming around that corner fast, they could have just smacked right into a moped because you're not going to really see the moped very well. But I also wondered too, like Steve said, if painting lines on the road might be good because in the in the five o'clock-ish time when people are picking up. It's not like you said, it's one lane on the north side and then the through lane. For people to drive, people are parking on both sides and then you've got a narrow. Drive to get in between and then once in a while someone's coming the wrong way. So it might be good to do that too. That's something to talk with Ryan over here, but on part of it, but but that's where I'm seeing the issues is is later in the evening for activity pickup. Or when there's a, you know, wrestling meet or whatnot, a basketball game is there's some issues back there from. From what I'm seeing, so.
Good to know. I I know there's there's been a few parents that and even some staff have admitted like. I I forgot, you know, when when they were going, you know, they'll let me know when they're when they're leaving at the end of the day, like. Yeah, I forgot, you know, I'm used to turning right for so many years and I can only turn left.
I've seen in the mornings when I'm dropping her off early. Down the parking end by twelfth. The the teacher's coming in going the wrong way to get to the parking. Because there's nobody dropping off at that time with a handful, but yeah.
Doing that, about not doing that.
Yeah, good idea.
It's a bad habit to to be in.
So but otherwise, like I said, I I've not seen the drop-off or pickup yet just because. She hasn't been going at the she rides the bus most of the time. So anyway, those are my two cents on it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate the update. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Always good to have the follow-up. Okay, our next item is Sixth Avenue Parking.
Yes, so in your council packet, there's a lot of information. I'm not going to read all that to you. Basically, back in twenty twelve, we built Sixth Avenue out here. Since then, we've continued to build Sixth Avenue. It's now connected. Some council members call it Barcalo Avenue. Boulevard. Now that. We were doing Seventh Avenue and actually pushing traffic onto sixth, a lot more people are are seeing the benefit of it. And the traffic has since steadily increased over the years. So with that, when we did Sixth Avenue, the first go-around. We were told parking is a problem. We need to put as many parking stalls as possible in there. It wasn't as big of a deal at the time because there wasn't as much traffic as there is today. Now that we're seeing the higher levels of traffic, the new library opening. We're having a lot more complaints about visibility at the intersections of Sixth Avenue and twelfth and thirteenth. So we've done traffic counts to determine that a a signal is not warranted based on the M U T C D manual and uniform traffic control devices. Sixth Avenue was made to move traffic and so not putting up stop signs just to add that. Cross traffic in there. We do have a signal at tenth that has pedestrian crossing and then obviously the roundabout at fifteenth. Eventually, the plaza will be extended through Eleventh Street and there will be a rapid flashing beacon putting in. At that location to help the pedestrians cross. And so this was gone through a few steps here recently. So there's one week where we blocked off one parking stall. Would just with cones, informed city council to drive through it, take a look at it, see what you thought. And the next week, we blocked off two stalls and again notified you and and let you kind of drive through it and see. We took it to the council subcommittee to see what the the opinion was for the subcommittee. They wanted to see some cost estimates and again, all that stuff is in your packet, but just a high-level summary. So option one is taking away one parking stall from each intersection. You'll see that some of the parking stalls like on the east side of thirteenth street, we didn't need to because there's actually a little bit more area in there. Where we didn't try and put one more parking stall in there at that time. So option one is taking away five parking spots. And this is permanently taking them away. So we would pull out the curb and gutter. We would put the curb and gutter in its new location. We would put brick in there. So other than the colors not matching exactly. It it's going to look like the rest of the street, just taking those stalls out. So taking away five parking spots was an estimated cost of fifty-four thousand dollars. So that was one option. The other option that I was looking at was actually taking away two parking stalls. So again, in some areas, we're taking away just one, for example, on the east side of thirteenth because that extra area. And like on the north side of the new library, there is no parking there, so we don't take parking away. So in that case, we're taking away twelve parking stalls and that is at a cost of a hundred and five thousand. In your council packet, the the cost estimate breaks down each item. I know that bike racks was something that was brought up during the the subcommittee meeting. To throw that number in there so that number could be included or or not included. So now staff is looking for direction. I would say a couple of things. Number one, I know we don't want to just go out there and paint the stalls, but we need to look at some kind of a temporary solution. So obviously, it's going to take time to go out, survey it, bid it, build it, and we're not into the perfect construction season right now. So what are we going to do through the winter? Do we want to go ahead and take that liability down and and block off those parking stalls? Paint it for now and then in the the summer, we can construct it how it's supposed to be. Or is it a trial run where we paint it and see? Take it through a a summer and see if we're spending a hundred and five thousand dollars that is not in the current C I P. We could sign it. There's all kinds of different things we can do. And determine is two enough. Maybe we need to take away three or maybe only one is needed to be taken away and get that feedback too. So there can be that feedback loop that's in there. So at this point, we've kind of put together some numbers, some options. Ultimately, the recommendation would be to at least do this here, which is taking away twelve parking spots. That's obviously a very political decision. We know that parking is a perceived issue in the uptown. But we also take safety into account with all the pedestrians and the turning movements. Anytime there's an accident out here, we obviously hear about it and the visibility issues. A lot of people also do not like to have to stop twice. So as you can tell, the stop bar is quite a ways back. But you're supposed to approach the stop bar, stop at the stop bar, let pedestrians that are in front of you, if they're they're cross the crosswalk. Come up to the crosswalk where you can then see further and then make your movement when it's safe to do so. A lot of people don't like doing that either, but unfortunately, that's the rules of law, so. Looking for feedback or if there's additional information that city council would like to know from staff. We don't have to make a decision today. We want to at least start the conversation of how do we want to move forward with this.
Mike, early on in this discussion, I remember seeing some. What I'm going to call line of sight diagrams that were part of the original. Design of Sixth Street or a component of that effort. Which of these two options best conform to those line of sight? Analyses that were done.
Option two. If you do the the actual site triangle, it would probably take away all the parking stalls and I don't know that anybody wants to do that.
Okay. So it I guess from an engineering standpoint, we knew that we were kind of. Going to likely have this problem at some date in the future. Based on those line of sight.
Yeah, but it was the direction that we were given, that parking was premium and.
Got it. Yep, I know. I get it. So this is this is a predictable headache, I guess is what I'm saying. Get a bottle of aspirin and tape them on your forehead.
So listening to what you just said is from a safety aspect. Option two. Is better than option one.
For site visibility, yes.
For site visibility. So if we did option one. That doesn't, you still have a site visibility concern.
You're still going to have a site visibility concern even with option two, depending on the person. If I'm in my truck, I'm at a higher elevation. So it's easier for me to see if there's a parked car there. But if I park Tom's vehicle at the corner and I'm driving a car, I can't see around it.
Okay, so and and I'm going to ask this question. You may not be able to answer it. So how much? Safer. Is option two over option one?
I don't know if there's a a number, a stat that I can give you. I can tell you. The more visibility you can give someone, the more comfort they're going to feel.
Okay. So go doing option one now. If we did spent the money on that, then later if we increase that to option two. We're just going to spend a lot more money than what option two would. We're going to do option one plus another option one. Which will cost a lot. We're going to do option one plus another option one, which will cost a lot more than option two today. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct. So I would say if if council is not for sure, we're like a hundred percent, we're in option two. Rather than spend that kind of money, I would recommend either we block off the stalls with paint or signs. I know that's not the permanent solution. But more of a test run, okay, we've blocked off two stalls, one stall permanently. See how it works and then come with a project at a later time when it's in the CIP and budgeted. That's something that can be an interim step. Knowing that eventually we're going to do it the right way, but until then, we want to see, is everybody okay with just taking away five stalls rather than twelve stalls?
So we still, we got the whole winter to learn that.
We can take as much time as we want.
Right. So yeah, the one question I had, and I think I've answered it in my own head and I I maybe mentioned this earlier to to Ryan was. Do we need to incorporate this as part of our parking study, which we're going to do next year sometime? And this is really independent of that. This is really a safety issue versus a parking.
Yeah, I mean.
Space issue, right?
Well, what happened is if we knew that we were going with option two or option one, whichever it was. They would take that into consideration as one of the available parking stalls when they do the parking study. So if we knew we were taking twelve stalls away, there's that's an input into the study. The study might say that we still need to make up those twelve somewhere, but we need to find a safer place to put them.
Thanks.
Well. Mike, my time for comment to Will, because I think he has the same opinions.
Couple of questions first. With the Ron main on six, there's all those bushes they have. Are those all going away or are they already gone? No, they're still there.
Um, the bushes, I believe, are are still there. They will have the underground parking. I mean, you can see them here on the. On the map, but those are behind here. They're quite a ways back.
Right.
So I don't know if those are site visibility issues. We can have Mike Sembridge take a look and and see, but I I don't. I've never heard anyone complain about the bushes. It's about parked cars.
I totally agree. I was just curious because of that side doesn't have parking. And then whatever happened. Was it a year ago, maybe two years ago, put up that little sign at the corner for pedestrian crossing? That was in the middle of the. Did it get knocked over like day one or something?
Yeah, so what we did was at thirteenth street on the west side, the we put the signs, my mouth shows up, right? So we put signs here to delineate that that crosswalk, even though it's a colored crosswalk, just to delineate more. And then we actually added one of those paddles that we used to have on Seventh Avenue where we had the raised medians. It lasted an hour.
An hour.
Yeah.
Well, my my opinion on what to do would to move forward with option two. I think it'd be good to paint it with taking out the twelve spaces. Maybe even signage, because if there's snow on it or something. And then maybe in then try and get that into the next budget cycle to do it. But in that timeframe between now and next cycle. If we think that we don't need twelve and we go to five and we can obviously adjust them, but I think painting it now would be a good. Would be good and then planning to do it and then if you change your mind and don't do it at all, then there's an extra hundred and five thousand dollars towards something.
Yeah, I, Mike, I'm in favor of option two. It optimizes, or I should say it's the most successful mitigation for the. The problem that we have, although it's not a complete mitigation. And painting, as Will had said, just seems to be the right option. We see how the behaviors are. We 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 may learn some other perspectives from our citizens that. As they experience this and have to adjust, that would inform them, whatever our final decision is. But I think option two with paint is the way to go.
And we can put the paint down, create a CIP sheet, have it go through the system, just like all the other projects. And then when the money's available, then we we do it knowing that that's a temporary Band-Aid. It's not the permanent solution. But rather than spending a hundred and five and then changing our mind later. Being fiscally responsible.
Is there anyone with a with a different opinion or strongly opposed to that recommendation? Okay.
So option two with paint for now and we'll evaluate and proceed later.
It's Mike. All right, before we go to closed session, just want to wish council member Sturnedad happy birthday yesterday, right?
Let's see. Hey, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the closed session. Regarding personnel matters as permitted under section twenty-one point five one I of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Adjourn the closed session regarding personnel matters as permitted under section twenty-one point five I of the Code of Iowa. And we have the legal counsel statement, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa code, section twenty-one point five one I.
Hey, roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. We're adjourned to the closed session.